At the meeting of November 30th, 2020. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everybody. Uh, Mr. Priest, I believe you have something to read.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the government's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty eight, section twenty, and the government's March fifteenth, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that gather in one place. This public hearing of the town of Burlington Bulle selection is being conducted via remote participation. Attendance members or the public will be permitted. The public can listen and or view this meeting while in progress as broadcast on B C A government cable access television. B C A government Facebook, uh, covers Facebook Live page or by using the link provided in the agenda for our web access go online meeting or via phone at four zero eight, four one eight, nine three eight eight, meeting number one seven nine, three nine one, zero three, zero nine. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment. By commenting on the B C A government coverage Facebook Live page, the try function on the web virtual meeting or via telephone at seven eight one, two seven zero, one six three. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sagorino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, tonight, uh, we have Burlington Police Officer Jake DeSantis here for recognition. Uh, Jake is a U S Army veteran and he recently completed a twenty-two mile ruck to raise awareness about veterans and suicide and to raise funds for the Massachusetts Fallen Heroes Foundation. Uh, a ruck is a military term for hiking in full gear with a backpack of upwards of fifty pounds. Uh, I also want to acknowledge that Officer DeSantis, uh, has a partner in this initiative who was also a Burlington native, uh, Lieutenant Joe Morgan, who also did the ruck, but down in Georgia where he is stationed. Uh, this is just another, uh, great example of the quality of folks that we have working here for our community. And I just wanted, uh, the board to have the opportunity, uh, to recognize, uh, Officer DeSantis. And I know he was, uh, also, uh, raising money. So if he wants to, uh, tell us a little bit about the ruck. I know Chief Kent is here. He may have a few words first, but, um, be a good opportunity for, uh, Officer DeSantis to get some publicity for his fundraising efforts.
Thank you, Paul. Before I turn it over to Jake, um, again, as Paul said, he's a, uh, a great example of the young officers coming on this department. The job's getting more and more complicated, but I'm confident, um, the town's going to be in good hands with people like Jake. Born and bred in Burlington, graduate of, uh, Burlington High in two thousand and fourteen. He's just a stand-up guy with a big heart as you're gonna, um, see listening to him. And before I turn it over to him, there was one thing when this was going on, it was, uh, took out a life on social media. And I came across one tweet from Bill Breton, who most of you know, was the Commissioner of New York City, the Chief of Los Angeles and the Commissioner of Boston PD. He tweeted out, "Kudos to Burlington Mass Police Officer Jake DeSantis, who walked twenty-two miles to raise money for veterans. An Army veteran himself, Officer DeSantis adds this to his lengthy list of selfless service to others. Burlington and America are lucky to have him." I, I certainly concur with Commissioner Breton's, uh, thoughts. So Jake, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, and thank you, everyone. I appreciate everyone's, um, support and help with everything that was going on. Just a little background, I guess, of the whole user was, um, the whole idea started just on the seventh, just prior to Veterans Day. And every year I try to do something for Veterans Day to commemorate those before and after, and even those actively serving. Um, so I decided, you know what? I, there was really no avenue for me to do anything just because of all the, uh, everything with COVID. So I was like, you know what? I'll do this myself and I'll see if I can just raise five hundred dollars and five hundred dollars was the initial goal. And I honestly, I wasn't expecting even to touch close to it. But, um, just with the unbelievable support and just everybody sharing our message, uh, it, we ended up raising fourteen thousand seventy-six. So, um, was, it was much bigger than what we expected. And at the end of the day, everyone, every, like, if it wasn't for everyone supporting myself and Joe Morgan, all, all we did was walk. And we just appreciate everyone's, the bigger goal, the bigger picture here is the support and just the love for the veteran community that we receive specifically and the amount of people that reached out and they're just like, hey, like, what you're doing is amazing. At the, at the end of the day, all, all myself and, uh, Joe Morgan did walk. But the bigger picture is definitely the support for the veteran community that I think everyone needed to, uh, to take notice to. And then, um, the GoFundMe is still technically up. The money goes straight to the Massachusetts Fallen Heroes Association. So all that money goes straight from the GoFundMe to their association. It's, um, W W W dot GoFundMe dot com and then it's gonna be slash, um, M F H, as in Massachusetts Fallen Heroes. It's good twenty-two, four, twenty-two. So, um, that's gonna be the link to it. If anyone would like to still donate, the money's still going straight to the foundation and honestly, anything, anything helps. So we appreciate it all and I, I thank you guys so much for bringing me along here.
Thank you, Jake. Uh, listen, the way we usually work this is we let, uh, we let the selectmen speak first and I go last, which I'm really tempted to go first this time. But I'm gonna let them all go the way we always do. So Mr. Hogan, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Jake. Congratulations to you and Joe. Um, it, it's really an extraordinary thing that the two of you have done. Um, where in Georgia is Lieutenant Morgan actually serving?
So Lieutenant Morgan, he is stationed at Fort Benning, Georgia, and he actually has since moved from there and he's in Germany right now. He's in processing into a, into the base in Germany there. So that's where his active duty unit is right now.
And would you make sure you let him know he's in our hearts and his safety as yours is utmost to us in our prayers?
Jake, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Runyon.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman Jake. Congratulations. You know, I'm always happy to recognize, um, folks in the community, um, who perform community service. Uh, but it's even a little more special when our employees are involved. So again, thank you so much and pleasure meeting you virtually. We usually, you know, and that's what I miss most about these selectmen's meetings, you know, when we have new hires and stuff, we have an opportunity to, uh, congratulate them and thank them in person. But, uh, anyhow, I look forward to meeting you, uh, in the very near future. Thanks again.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Jake, I want to congratulate you and thank you and Lieutenant Morgan for your efforts. Um, you, you stated, uh, you just walked, but you not only just walked, you also represented the police department and, um, in the town as well. So on behalf of both of those, I wanna, I wanna thank you for, for representing us. And then a- as well as your efforts, and I can guarantee you at least at the end of this meeting that, that GoFundMe will go up a li- a little. Um, but, uh, congrats and, and, uh, again, thanks for making, you know, Burlington a, a good name for, for the town of Burlington and the Burlington Police Department.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Jake, again, congratulations. I mean, you'll get all of us, um, you know, and you, like, like Sleipnig and Tigges just said, you know, you said all, all we did was walk, but you know, you did so much more than that. Um, you know, raising awareness and providing a voice to those who need it is, is beyond. Um, you know, when, when they said that someone goes above and beyond, you most certainly did, even though it may have only felt as the walk. Um, so thank you, bottom of my heart. Um, thank you to both, you know, you and Lieutenant Morgan for your service, um, for doing this, for doing something every year, uh, for keeping that awareness alive, um, and supporting our veterans. I think that it's, it's huge and needs to be done more. So a huge thank you. Um, this is a point of clarification, if I may. You said the GoFundMe was, was M F H two-two, the number four, two-two?
Four F O R.
F O R. Okay. I'll be, I'll be blessed on social media.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And now you know why I go last, because everything's already been said. Uh, Jake, you and Joe did a phenomenal job about, uh, the walk itself. And the guys were right. It wasn't just a walk. It's, it would have represents, yeah, the young and it's a good walk. The four of us could never go that far. Would make it just maybe outside the Woburn line. It would have to call a car for the rest of the ride. Um, Joey could probably attest to that because, you know, he's such a great person. Um, it shows the character of person that you and Joe really have. And it also shows that, um, the hiring of the Department of Burlington, which we can thank Chief Kent and the rest of the staff that does the hiring, to bring on character people like yourself, uh, to do this kind of stuff. I'm sure that Joey's gonna go further his career as a lieutenant already, which was very quick. He became lieutenant, but he's working very hard at it. Which is great. Uh, the two people I'd like to thank also was your mother and father and Joey's mother and father. Maybe not Karen as much, but definitely his father. And Karen, you can tell her I said that. Uh, she's a great person, but, uh, it just shows on, um, how you're brought up, uh, what, what your morals and standards can be. Um, and it all comes from the home. I've said that a hundred times on this, on this, uh, webcast thing. So, uh, I'd like to thank the chief, the, your mother and father, and you especially for making that commitment to walk that far. So from the bottom of my heart, we really do appreciate it. And, uh, gentlemen, um, we can get together as a group and donate, or we can do it ourselves, whatever everybody feels like. Uh, let me know afterwards and we'll do something, okay? So thank you very much and I'm glad we have the, the site now to, to, um, donate some money to this charity. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Mr. Sagorino.
Mr. Chairman, I'll never get tired of him saying kudos instead of kudos. Uh, so I am gonna miss that when he retires. Only person who pronounces it that way. And I'm sorry he laughed, but, uh, uh, the next item up, uh, we have our Public Works Director, John Sanchez here, uh, for the board for their triannual vote on water and sewer rates. John.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm having difficulties. Uh, uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and, uh, Board of Selectmen. So I'm, I'm here back tonight after, um, three years since we, uh, talked about, uh, the rate increases that we needed for the M W R A project and also for, uh, regular, uh, operations of water and sewer. Uh, this year is slightly different than what you've seen before. And this is a result of the approval of the Water Resources Commission. Uh, during the approval process, the Water Resources Commission, uh, conditioned certain items, uh, related to our water and sewer rates. Uh, particularly, I'm gonna name three, are that one, uh, commercial properties as well as the irrigation billing that we do will no longer have a base charge that provides for free water. Uh, if you, uh, remember our rates, uh, right now, the commercial rates, the first ten thousand gallons of water used are included in the base rate that we currently charge, which for water is twenty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. And for irrigation, the first five thousand gallons that you get are included in the base rate of thirty dollars and forty-five cents. So, uh, in, to comply with the new rule, we're gonna have to, uh, pretty much start charging a zero gallons and, and change that to a service charge. Uh, you'll see that reflected on the rates and we can talk about that in a minute. Uh, the second part, item two, is that irrigation rates in billing will happen twice a year and not just once a year. And the goal of this change is that halfway through the season, anybody who is using an irrigation system will get a bill and they will know how much water they're using and perhaps, uh, if they're using too much, decide to actually use less water for that particular year. So that's again, one of the requirements in the rates that I'm proposing, uh, reflect that. Number three has to do with the residential rates. Um, currently we build all our residential properties twice a year. Uh, the new requirement will be that we build residential properties four times a year. However, they gave us, uh, up to four years to complete, uh, that change. Uh, and, and one of the reasons we're waiting to do that is because that actually doubles the amount of bills that we have to process, which is in the thousands. So, uh, you'll see us coming back a few years down the road and asking for a change of those rates. But for now, I'm gonna ask you to, uh, just, uh, I'm gonna recommend the change on, eh, on the first two items. Um, in addition to it, um, I'm recommending that we create a new fee, uh, and that is for hydrant flow testing. Uh, during times where, uh, anybody's gonna develop a property, and this is mostly commercial properties, um, they are required to do a high flow test to determine the amount of water available for fire flow. Uh, we've been doing a lot of those lately and they take a lot of time to do. Most communities around us charge a fee for it, uh, and I recommend that we charge a two hundred dollar fee, uh, so we can perform this test. This normally requires a couple of personnel for, uh, probably two or three hours depending on, on the test that we need to run at that particular property. So there's a new fee that I'm proposing as well. Now, specific to the rates themselves, uh, if you recall, three years ago, the goal of this rate increases is to create funds for us to join the M W R A. And, um, the increase that we're proposing this year and for the next two is on the water side is a six point eight percent increase, which is the same number that we talked about when we went to town meeting for approvals. And for the minimum bill, uh, as we have said before, this will mean about a ten dollar, uh, increase per year. Um, as a side note, I'll tell you that, um, on occasion I hear from people saying, uh, uh, about when is this bill's gonna go up? And it's, well, they started going up two years ago. Uh, it's such a small amount that people don't notice that in the bills, eh, which is a good thing. Um, but again, we, this will be year four of that, uh, ten year plan that we proposed at town meeting, uh, several years back. Um, with your, uh, package, I also send you copies of what all the communities typically, uh, charge for water and sewer, just as a way of comparison. Um, I'll use, I'll use a couple of them, uh, uh, because currently Burlington is at about a hundred and seventy dollars per year, while communities like Lexington are at fourteen hundred dollars, uh, Bedford eight hundred dollars, and even Wilmington closer seven hundred dollars a year. So we still remain very affordable and even with all these increases as we're proposing for the next, um, seven years, we still remain, uh, probably the most affordable community, uh, in the area. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have on it.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, right now we're gonna start out with, uh, Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you as always for putting together a comprehensive package and walking us through everything. It's always, uh, very helpful. Um, are we gonna wait the full four years before we make that bill and switch?
So, uh, more than likely we'll wait, um, uh, uh, it's probably year three, only because it's gonna require us to hire new personnel. Um, the amount of bills, uh, that we put out, uh, we have about seven thousand residential properties and we do about obviously fourteen thousand bills a year. Uh, by doubling this is now becomes twenty-eight thousand. And then a lot of handwork is not totally automated. Uh, so I will try, because of the cost of us to generate those bills, I, I recommend postpone that as much as we can. But we'll definitely be ready to comply by the deadline that the Water Resources Commission imposed.
Okay, great. And then this is a second question. The hydrant flow test. I'm sorry, this is someone on, not on mute. Um, the hydrant, the hydro flow test, is there, in, in what case, I guess, would there be where this would cause residential impact? Like, you know, uh, uh, what size of a project would, would a resident have to do to even invoke something like this?
Uh, it is never, uh, used for any type of residential property. What is it? This is a typically large commercial properties.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Runyon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, tell me follow up on that flow test. Um, also, are, are there private companies out there that do, uh, hydrant testing for these, uh, private developments on a regular basis anyhow, or does it all have to be, the initial one have to be done by the town?
So this is, uh, a lot of it has to do with designing of the properties also. Insurance. So, so towns are the ones who do this initial flow test. Uh, I know once the properties, uh, are constructed, um, developers can use the reading companies to test their own hydrants within their developments, uh, but this will be for the hydrants on the street. And it's typically prior to being developed in, uh, uh, I know all the towns around us, they use town forces to do it.
Okay, um, how, uh, what are you looking for us to do here tonight? Honestly, there's quite a bit, um, of, of items on your, your list. Do you wanna, we're gonna be taking them one by one or whole package? What's, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, I'm looking at two things. One is for the board to approve the rates for FY twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four as proposed. And also to, um, create a new fee for a higher flow testing for twenty dollars. So typically, you're taking one vote, uh, for the rates. And, and it could be a separate vote for that hydrant flow testing fee.
Okay. Were, were there any other changes, John, um, for street openings or anything? I saw some information in the backup or is that just, uh, included in the, in the manual?
And it, it's more like a compilation of rules, uh, in, in some cases we'll speak about it, but it has nothing to do with, uh, actual fees or, or rates. It's mostly about compiling rules that we already have in place.
Okay, thank you.
You all set, Mike? Yeah, okay. Mr. Hogan. Bob, you're on mute.
Thank you. Um, yeah, a couple of my questions have often been asked and answered, uh, but, uh, John, who's, who has dictated to us that the billing has to go to four times a year?
This is the, the Water Resources Commission. So, um, not to be confused with the M W R A. This is a different entity. Uh, the Water Resources Commission is formed by, uh, staff from, uh, D C R, Department of Conservation or Recreation, staff from the D E P. Um, uh, they has members from different organizations, uh, in, in planning as well. Um, and they are the entity that approves communities to get water from anybody else outside of their own community. So if, if Burlington went to get water from Woburn, as an example, we will have to go to a Water Resources Commission to be allowed to take water from them. Since we needed to get water from the M W R A that is coming from the Quabon Reservoir, we needed their ultimate approval to actually make the switch. Uh, so they have, uh, a, a lot of conditions. Uh, this one's referred to the actual billing, but they were all the conditions as, as far as we need to do internally with some of our processes. Uh, but they are the ones again who, uh, put these conditions in place.
And, and does, and does this, by doing it four times a year, does it improve the water delivery or anything, or is it just billing four times a year?
Uh, it's just billing four times a year. Uh, their, their idea, I will say, and, and I, whether I agree with it, uh, or not, I will say that their idea is that if you're a homeowner and you receive a bill more often, you're more likely to use less water if you see those bills coming in and, and you see a lot of water being used. Uh, and their guidelines say that at a minimum, citizens and towns should build their properties, their residents or the users at least four times a year.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, just, uh, quickly on, on the, uh, the hydrant flow, the commercial, for the commercial properties. How often does that happen? Does that happen to every commercial property? Once a year, twice a year? How often do they need the town to come in and do that?
Um, this is Jim, this is typically only when you're gonna construct something new. So, uh, so once the property is, is in place, uh, we don't do this test anymore. Uh, but with all the development that has, that obviously has been, is gonna happen in town, every time you take a building down and you're gonna build a new one, uh, they, they need a flow test. So.
Would that include like an addition to a building or just new, new construction?
It, it depends on the size. It all depends on the size of that addition. Uh, typically what I've seen is ninety-nine percent of the case is new buildings. You know, you take down a building and you're gonna build something new, you're gonna need a flow test. And this is not something, by the way, this is not something that we've required. The town does not require it. D P W does not require it. This is something that they need to do for their own benefits. So they know how much fly for they have, uh, in place for their facilities.
Yep. Uh, uh, that, that being said, I'm all in agreement for that two hundred dollar fee. I think, uh, it, it makes practical and, and fiscal sense. Uh, just one other just comment is, yeah, we, we're gonna be doubling our bills going out to twenty-eight thousand a year, but we're also gonna have, uh, twenty-eight thousand payments coming in that have to be processed as well. So it is, it is a big increase i- in, in the workload. So, uh, I, I appreciate you holding off for a couple of years and until we're ready for it, I guess you could say. But thank you.
So i- if I may, uh, uh, Jim and, and Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll say that this was one of the most contentious items that we had and Paul Sagorino helped us a lot through the process. Originally, uh, this requirement was to be implemented immediately. Uh, and this is, uh, we had some other items as well, but this is one of the ones that we, we didn't see the benefit, uh, for the cost, uh, for the town. So we were able to, uh, to talk, uh, with the commissioners and actually they were able to help us in delaying this for at least three years.
Thank you all. I'm also, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. So, John, let me get this straight. This two hundred dollar fee is gonna be three years away? Is that, is that what we're saying right now?
Uh, no, uh, uh, Mrs. Chairman, the, the two hundred dollar fee is totally outside of the M W R A approval. This is just for commercial, for new commercial properties. We, until now, we have not charged to do this test that requires, you know, hard time and operation. So this is a new fee that we, that, that we, I'm suggesting for new construction of commercial properties.
Okay. So does this have to do anything with the backflow prevention systems that had to go in a few years ago? Does this all part of that deal or is this something totally different?
Totally different, totally and related to the backflows.
Okay. Cause there's a lot of, a lot of places in town are supposed to do those and they never did them. And like, not gonna get into it, but there's a lot of them that didn't do it. So I'm just trying to figure out how this is gonna work for us. I'm not farthest against this right now. I haven't really, I, I missed this in the back, in the, in that conversation the other day. And I'm sorry I'm asking you this now. I don't like to do that. I'd rather call you up and ask you, but this is really concerning to me right now. Another two hundred dollar fee for businesses.
So, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, the two hundred dollars is not for businesses. The two hundred dollars is when there's gonna be new construction. Say, uh, a new facility is coming in, say a new apartment building is coming in.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so they, they come to us and they said, the developers.
Okay.
Come to us and they say like, we need you to do a flow test for us. Can you schedule one for us to be done? And then we obviously have to line up a crew to go out to be able to open a hydrant, measure a couple of hydrants and, and certify whatever flow we have. So this is not something we go after the commercial properties. They actually come to us, developers come to us for us to do this. Typical engineers, whoever is doing the design of the property is the one that will reach out to us. So you will not see it saying you're, in your businesses, we're, we're not gonna have two hundred dollars bills going out to anybody in town unless they require us or ask us to do a flow test for them.
Okay. And we've been doing this for free for all these years. No charge.
Yes.
Send your guys out during the course of a day, make an appointment on a Wednesday morning and they're there. And now we're gonna get paid.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And, and part of the issues, i- and if I may, uh, Mr. Chairman, part of the issue is that, uh, right now, uh, and I've been making the case that we're so short, you know, understaffed and shorthanded. So to be able to do this test, we start to back up sometimes weeks and months in time before we can actually do one of this. If we're able to charge a fee, then that's gonna give us the ability to do this after hours. Because now, you know, we can pay our people after hours coming in and run those tests.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John. Much, much, much more clarity for me now there than I thought it was. So thank you for that. Um, so Mike, uh, quick question to you, Mr. Runyon. Uh, you said something about separating this article into different things. Is it something you wanna talk about right now or just wanna vote it all in at once? So what would you like to do, Mr. Runyon?
Oh, uh, uh, no, I just wanted some, some, some clarification if it was gonna be separate or will be. I'm fine just bundling it unless, uh, anyone else has a issue.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Sagorino, any comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think that historically the board has just voted, uh, the document as submitted, uh, by Mr. Sanchez.
Okay.
One vote.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion on, uh, the document submitted?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we bundle these two items together for a positive vote of support for the hydrant flow test fee of $200 and the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, uh, rate increases as, uh, submitted by Mr. Sanchez in this information.
Gentlemen, motion by Bob. We have a second.
I'll speak.
Are we doing next?
Yep.
Okay, Bob, second by Nick. Gentlemen, once again, we're on a roll call vote. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon? Mr. Runyon? Mike? Is everyone on this?
I'm sorry, yes, yes, Joe.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. Five zero zero, Betty. All right, thank you, John. Truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, I'll sit Mr. Segarino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, next up we have our town engineer, Tom Hayes, uh, with, uh, some updates to our street opening, rules and regulations for the board to approve.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hey, Tom.
So, this, it's actually a good time to bring these in front of the board, uh, with John, um, asking for a vote on the rates and some changes to fees. It's a good time to, to compile all our rules and regulations. If you look over the last twenty years or so, we've had, um, between the water and the street opening rules and regulations, backflow, right-size meter, we have a lot of guidance and we have a lot of regulations. So, um, when someone comes into town and, and they need to know how to do a particular task, it's like, well, you can look at this and look at that, look at something else. So we thought we would compile everything into one comprehensive document. And this isn't, um, none of this is really new. A lot of the stuff in the, um, street opening rules and regulations is also covered in the water regs. So we did, we just merged all the documents, um, really didn't add much to the, to, to the size of, of the rules and regs. Because a lot of the, a lot of the, um, standard connections were already covered in both documents. So, um, what I'm asking the board to do tonight is to, to vote this in. Um, we will incorporate the rates once they're approved into this document as well, so it's, it's like one-stop shopping. If you need to know anything about rules and regs on utility connections or street opening permits, it'll be all in one place.
Okay, uh, gentlemen, we'll start with Mr. Runyon.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you highlight some of the changes for us that you're proposing?
Well, there's, there's not a lot of changes in, in actually the body. Um, you'd have to take both the rules and, like the water rules and regs and, um, the street opening rules and regs and just lay them out side by side. Some of the things that we've covered that we've just incorporated in there is, uh, safe backflows. Backflow was, was completely contained within the water rules and regs. And it was kind of touched on in the, uh, utility street opening rules and regs, and we just kind of merged those, those, you know, took this entire chapter and just incorporated it in. So if you look quick at the, uh, table of contents, um, let's see. Some of the items that are specific, were, were added in, uh, pretty much in whole, was, uh, water meters, uh, residential irrigation, backflows, commercial cross-connections, and the fees and rates and penalties. That is pretty much all right out of the rules or regs, almost verbatim. And some, on the backend, we have, um, some of our applications. The applications again would go to, it's right sizing meters, uh, residential irrigation, backflows, um. Those are pretty much it. Everything else is really, uh, was part of both documents, you know, certain things like, you know, one-inch copper water service. Um, right. So, so it's, so it's just a, a nice way to keep everything in one, in one, in one place.
So, uh, if I may add, uh, Mr. Chairman, John Sanchez here. So, uh, so correct me if I'm wrong here. All these rules that we had, all of them, I know the ones related to water meters, all they have already previously approved by the board select them, they just happen to reside in different places, different booklets. And all we've done is merged them together. If they was repetitive, then eliminated section is repetitive. But there is no new rules being created as part of this document.
Okay, all right. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Hogan?
Is, uh, am I, I'm assuming that this is not only a hard copy, but an online version is available to people? Is it easy, as easy or easier to find all the things you might need in a, in this one location?
Yes. I wasn't, uh, I've been with the town almost twenty years and I wasn't, uh, didn't even realize we had, uh, water regulations until recently. So, uh, I think, uh, yes, it'll be much easier to find these regulations when, when they're all online in one location.
Tommy, thank you for your service for the last twenty years here at town.
Thank you.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have no questions. I just want to say first off, thank you for, you know, taking the time to, pardon the crying baby. Taking the time to, uh, merge everything down. I, I appreciate, you know, when things are concise and easy to follow. Uh, and I know that, you know, uh, sometimes when it comes to working with a municipality, things are typically red tape laden, so, um, always greatly appreciated. Moving forward, anything that can be marked up or shown differences, uh, even if it was just like, hey, we merged from this to this or like a list of things, just so that we can see it laid out, would be just massively appreciated. Just like when it comes to like check changing documents to make sure, I, obviously, we implicitly trust that you're not changing, you know, the, the structured layout or how, how language is written, uh, but just like when, when it comes to like flipping through and reviewing it, it just gives a, a good sense of like where things were shuffled around. But, um, that's a logistics thing. Uh, again, I do appreciate everything. So thank you, Tom.
Sure. Chris, if you, if you look at, um, oh, sorry, Nick, if you look at, at, um, page three, we have a list of revisions that have happened over time. This, um, we could have probably, well, it would have been really messy if we tried to highlight everything that was kind of merged together between the two regulations. It would be, um, it would look, um, it would look pretty yellow, because a lot of things would be highlighted, because it was a lot.
Sure.
Going on, but, uh, over time, every time we bring this to the board, um, we try to, um, in this, um, revision table, we try to list all the things that have changed over time. So it's, it's a good place to start. And again, this was a, um, a big housekeeping, uh, endeavor. So, um, yeah, it would be pretty messy to try to highlight all the different things on the various pages that were, were modified. But again, a- as John said, there was, um, nothing added. These are all existing regulations. Um, there's no new, um, requirements. Everything has, um, stayed as it's been for, you know, the last twenty years.
Yeah, no, that's, that, that, thank you for pointing that out, Tom. I, I saw that. I thought it was a great top line. Honestly, like I, I, and this is just like me as, you know, someone who just like looking at check change documents all day. Even as like a check change word document, and I would happily just like take, take a glance through it, um, despite the highlights. But I, again, I appreciate everything.
Sure.
Thank you, Nick. Uh, Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Tom or John, I'm not sure who's better for this. Um, no, I can understand the merging of the documents and, and the need for consistency, but one thing that did jump out, uh, to me is, um, with regard to the penalties for water, um, we, we're gonna charge $300 if someone tampers with a hydrant, $300 if someone tampers with a backflow device. Yeah, and you may be able to explain this to me. Why if someone tampers with a town-owned meter, we only charge it $100 to me? And again, I may be misinformed or miseducated with regard to water meters, why are we only charging $100 if someone tampers with a town-owned water meter?
So, so if I may, uh, when we went through these, uh, penalties, again, we're gonna change those penalties, Jim. This is the same penalty we have in the books. And we went to town meeting, uh, certain penalties have to be higher because they may create hazards to the water we drink. Uh, and somebody messing with a hydrant or a backflow device can actually create a big hazard to the residents of the town. Somebody messing with a water meter, uh, yeah, they may be stealing water, uh, but it's not really creating a hazard. That's why it's a lesser, um, penalty, if I may. And at the time we got those penalties, uh, in town meeting, uh, somebody says, why don't you have like a $10,000 fee? Well, we can't have those. There's a certain amount that we have to go, and I, and I forget how it is defined, but, uh, but we just can't passively create penalties because somebody may be, uh, doing something. Uh, uh, another one is like, uh, uh, when somebody's violation of the water ban, you know, and people say, why don't you make it a $500? Well, it, it doesn't work that way. There's certain values for certain penalties that we have to keep. But, uh, but just to answer again, um, hazard, health hazard to us is worth more than theft.
Oh, well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Well, John, thank you, because that does explain and clarify for me. I was just looking for a reason why, and you just gave me the reason why there's a difference, but thank you. I'll sit, Mr. Chairman.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. Um, Tom, I don't have any questions. I think this is a great idea. I think it's wonderful that you're putting everything into a package. Make it a lot easier for residents and building owners or, uh, business people to come in and just look at that and just go from there. So, uh, kudos to you. Thank you for twenty years of service, my friend.
Thank you.
Uh, so this is just an update. There's no, no vote, no, nothing to go off with this, so thank you, guys.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't know if we put it in there, but I think, uh, it may be a support vote that we're compiling all documents into this one.
All it says is update.
Okay.
Mr. Segarino, would you like, would you like us to vote on this?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Now you can have your vote, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That comes from Petron's days. All right, gentlemen, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the compilation, uh, of all of these regulations and, uh, thank the, uh, all the staff that participated in it.
Motion by Bob, second by Nick. Gentlemen, we're gonna get out of the line again. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Uh, Mr. Segarino?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I ask your indulgence, uh, to take a, uh, an item out of order?
Absolutely.
Could we take up item, uh, five thirty-five, micro enterprise grants for small businesses? I know we have, uh, some small business, uh, owners from town here in the meeting with us, and I'm sure that they would, uh, like to do something more enjoyable with their evening. So if we could, get them, get them, um, taken up right now, I would appreciate it.
Well, this is the time to help small businesses, so I'm all in.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Economic Development Director Melissa Tentakalos.
Evening, folks. Thank you for having, um, us. I will say, um, I'm Melissa, the Economic Development Director. And I can't see everyone. I know some folks have called, but I'd like to give you an update and, um, I wanted to share a few, um, I think stories from our small business community and kind of give you, um, kind of the positive outcomes, I would say, from the grant that we received. If you recall, through the CARES Act funding, um, we were able to secure approximately, um, a hundred and twenty thousand for micro enterprise, um, businesses. That's five people or less. And they had to kind of jump through a lot of hoops because there was, it was federal money, so it was challenging, um, for some of them. But I'm happy to announce that we, um, have worked with Mass, Massachusetts Growth Capital Corporation, MGCC, um, to award seven local businesses at this point for approximately seventy thousand. And a few of them are on the call tonight. We've had folks from nail salons to independent photographers, and a few of them are online. So I'll just run through to see, what I'd like to do is just give them a chance to say a few words, maybe share their story, if that's okay. Uh, Selectman Morandi.
Yes.
Is that okay?
That's fine, yep.
Thank you. So, um, Lori Becker, are you online?
I am.
Do you mind to just share a little bit about, hi there?
Hi.
Share a little bit about your experience and kind of, just kind of give some details to the board of Selectmen?
Sure. Um, so Lori Becker, nice to be here tonight. Um, thank you for having us. Um, I know a few of you, but not everybody by, by face, um, but mostly by name. Um, so Lori Becker, I own a couple businesses in town. I'm, um, pretty busy as I'm told, but I don't really think it's, uh, that busy. So, um, the micro grant that I did receive was for Publishing Solutions Group, which is one of the businesses, and we, um, actually develop content for educational publishers. So I work for Scholastic, Houghton Mifflin, Prentice Hall, publishers like that, and we develop, uh, textbook content, and I also work for Sback and other consortiums that put together the assessment tests that our kids love taking so much. So, so I'm the test lady. Um, and I also, um, own CrossFit Exclamation, which is, um, a small gym in town, um, which I applied for a grant for this. I don't know if I will receive it yet, and it's kind of awkward, because, um, through the P process, which I'm sure you guys are all familiar with, that was, that was tough enough and, um, you know, not as difficult as these, because this particular grant being federal had a lot more, you know, to do. Um, but for some reason, um, I did want to get a PPP for my gym, and I haven't seen anything for this yet. So I don't know what's going on with the gym situation, because we were the first closed down. So, um, so that's kind of difficult. But, um, I think, you know, as far as Melissa and I were talking offline about this a little bit, but it's just been really hard. I mean, I never thought in a million years that being education and in health and fitness would be something that would be a bad combination. Um, so, you know, it's been interesting, because we were shut down for six months, um, in both businesses until schools got back on track. And then also, you know, obviously, everybody knows about the fitness industry and what's been happening with that. But luckily, I'm also, my other hat, as I'm also the president of the Rotary Club in Burlington, so, um, we have actually been pretty busy with a lot of volunteer efforts and things are in need for the town. So, um, so it's sort of a good and bad thing that, um, I've had more time to focus on Rotary while, you know, trying to manage, um, businesses as well. So, um, but, you know, the town's been great. I've, um, been in business in town for about five years, um, for both my businesses. I was in Woburn. Um, and years ago I was a selectman, so I'm actually very happy at this meeting, and I have to tell you, I'm missing it very much, just like watching this. So, um, I really truly am. So, um, I don't know if you guys have any questions or how much have I, did I cover everything you wanted to cover, I think?
So I think what we'd like to do is just get everyone introduced, and then I think if the Selectmen have some questions, um, that'd be great. Mary Ann, are you still online? Huey, Huey Lee from B&amp;B Nails? Not sure. Some of them had time constraints. So, and Randy Brojen, did I see you?
I'm here.
Hi. Hi there.
Hi there. I can tell you just a little bit about us. Um, Mr. Chairman and other board members, thank you for the opportunity, uh, to speak with you this evening. Uh, my name is Randy Brojen, and my wife Carolyn and I own Brojen Photography. It's a professional studio, and I am a professional photography studio, right there on the Town Common, by the Shell Station. I am a US Army veteran and, uh, we are a certified veteran-owned and woman-owned business. Uh, we're located there at eleven Bedford Street, right on the Town Common, and we've been there for the past eight years. We also have been in Burlington, um, as residents for almost twenty-five years. My wife and I are two of only thirty, thirty-nine certified professional photographers in the entire state. I'm also a master photographer, and we pride ourselves on providing Burlington and surrounding communities, um, with the highest quality product and customer service possible. As with other companies, um, you might imagine, our, our studio has been severely impacted by the COVID pandemic. Our revenue has dropped between sixty and ninety percent month-to-month, and an overall annual reduction of approximately sixty-five percent. So you can imagine it's been very challenging to keep businesses running and minimizing the impact on our family with three children going to school and, and all of that, uh, that, that entails. The MGCC grant is a, uh, integral key part of our financial strategy to bridge that gap while we traverse, uh, these uncharted waters, uh, of heavily fluctuating economy, of a heavily fluctuating, uh, economy. Um, that's been absolutely decimated by the pandemic. Um, that financial assistance will have a direct positive impact on our ability to keep our doors open and continue to provide for our family. And we are truly grateful to everyone, all of those dedicated, hardworking people, like Melissa and, and everybody at MGCC, uh, involved in the process of reviewing and selecting the recipients, and we're honored and forever. And we are truly grateful to everyone, all of those dedicated, hardworking people like Melissa and, and everybody at MGCC involved in the process of reviewing and selecting the recipients, and we're honored and forever grateful for being selected as recipients. Carolyn and I thank you for your tremendous assistance in helping small businesses stay viable during these very challenging times. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Mary Ann, I think you were on. I might have been too quick to jump. Are you still there? Can you hear me? It's a little staticky. I think it's evening out. There it goes.
Okay. Well, first, let me say thank you for getting this opportunity to speak before the board. Melissa, a big thank you to you. Some of these small businesses.
I'm going to interrupt for a second. Your audio is.
Tom welcomed me 100%.
Mary Ann? Mary Ann. Very much so.
Are you having trouble hearing me?
Very, very broken up and static.
I'm getting a speaker here, and I, I will move.
I, I don't know. I wouldn't know what to tell you to do. I just want to send a text message.
I'm going to go closer than.
Yeah. Sometimes, Mary Ann, if the video is off, it allows for more of the audio file to go through.
Okay, this might be.
No, you're still broken up to my, to mine.
Yeah, try that.
Okay, is that better? Well, thank you, town member. Okay. Thank you, town member.
It's just, it's not working right now.
Yeah.
I apologize for that, but.
I apologize.
That's no problem. We understand exactly how you feel and everyone else feels, and I know that there's people that you want to talk to. Thank you.
You had some words to say.
Yeah.
I sent it, they had to send it to you, Melissa.
I would be happy, I would be happy to send it forward.
Send that, send that an email to us, and we can all read that. That'd be great.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome.
And I appreciate that you're making an effort. And then I don't know if Kate Williams or Rita Petone is on?
Kate Williams is right there.
Here.
Hi, Kate.
Hi. Thank you, everyone, for hosting this tonight to give the business owners an opportunity to thank you for distributing these grants to help our businesses. I own Amari Prom, the located on Cambridge Street in Burlington, and I've been in business for 18 years, and that's my neighbor. And we, we sell and we provide prom dresses to the local high school students and college students and also formals and bridesmaids. And COVID has obviously severely impacted our business. We, our physical location has been closed to the public because of COVID. So we appreciate the grant to keep the business going, to keep operating and expenses being paid so that we can safely reopen when schools are able to host proms and weddings go back to normal, when people start having bridesmaids in their weddings. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to have my business in Burlington.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
And then is there someone from B&amp;B Nails on? Let me just look. It looked like Huey Lee or Quanon? Okay. There is also, hello?
Uh, yes, I'm waiting for the last section, and I'll have a question to ask.
For which item?
The citizen term.
Or which one?
From the agenda, I can see we have, at the end of the meeting, we have time to, to ask for questions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll wait for that. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, the representative from B&amp;B Nails is not on, but I think what I'd like to just kind of summarize is, I mean, I think this gives us all just kind of a little slice of, you know, the faces and the people that make up our small business community and some of the struggles they're facing. Obviously, this grant, I feel, may help them, you know, kind of get through the next, you know, next few steps here. There might be some, you know, larger action that's needed going forward. But, you know, in terms of our business community, I know I'm very appreciative of them of being, you know, really kind of the uniqueness of our community. This is what, you know, the neighborhooding, neighborhood services that are provided to our residents. It's these, you know, these people, these faces that really make up our community, and so I'm honored to have them and have been part of, you know, getting us through some of the tougher times here.
Thank you, Melissa. Gentlemen, before we move along, would anyone like to say anything? We'll start off, Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I want to thank everybody who took the time to be here this evening. You know, obviously, taking time out of your days. I mean, time, especially nowadays, I think is, is one of our most precious, you know, resources, if you will. You know, but it's, it's great to see everybody here tonight. I'm glad that, you know, you all stuck with the process and were awarded the funds. Melissa, thank you for shepherding this on. You know, I think that you're getting great press. You know, and it's awful to make, make light of an awful situation, but it's great that you're able to connect these businesses with the MGCC and, you know, have them, these funds that are to help them. You know, you folks have chosen to make Burlington your home, you know, and the fact that we can help, you know, keep you here. And, you know, we weather this together as a community is just, it's, it's, that's the silver lining in this for me is that, you know, we're all in a tough spot. We're all in a, in a rocky boat, but, you know, we're together, and we're, and we're going to get through it together. So thank you all again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan? You're on mute, Bob. You're still on mute, Bob. There you go.
Okay. Melissa, thank you for the work you did on this. And it's, it's interesting, the large businesses in town are certainly what Burlington is known for, but it's all of these small, individual mom-and-pop facilities that make us, give us our additional personality. So again, congratulations to Kathleen and Randy, and Randy, thank you for your service as a veteran, and Lori's going to be with us later in the meeting to talk about part of the people helping people, part of our agenda. So congratulations to everybody, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, it's great to have you folks here tonight. It's great to, to, to meet some of you for the first time. I appreciate you doing business here in Burlington. I do have a quick question for Melissa. However, is, is there any, any grant money left available, Melissa, or is it, or is the time passed on that?
No, there's two pots of money still, still kind of with some of the same requirements around eligibility, around income. However, the state has some funding. It's also through MGCC. I know I've talked to a couple of our business owners about that. If you are out there and you, you still have questions on additional funding, please reach out to me because there are, there are a few pockets of money that are still accessible.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Melissa, I know we talked about seven small businesses that have received the grants. How, how many applications, I guess you could say, did we get?
Um, that's a good question. We had approximately 15. A lot of them, you know, in terms of the eligibility, whether it's size or income, did not qualify. And so I think what we're also looking to at this point, one thing, at least a statistic that we're looking at with the state, is the PPP program. We don't have a good sense of how many have applied and received that. So we're looking to get that data as well, which is a separate program, but it'll give us, shed some light on, you know, the businesses that access that funding as well.
Thank you. And Melissa, I know I speak for the other members of the board. You have done an outstanding job. I mean, we brought you on as our economic development, and you, in this COVID hit and, you know, a lot of the stuff that was put on hold, but hang in there because there will be a post-COVID day sometime. And just think about that. That's, there's going to be a post-COVID, sometime when there's going to be, COVID's going to be in the back behind us, and we'll still have you, and I'm sure you're just going to keep going forward as you have. But, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have right now.
Thank you very much. So also, I, I take it that everyone's thanked you except for me. So I just want to say thank you for being part of this team in Burlington. I told you from day one, this is a great town, a lot of great people in it, and you just make it better. So congratulations on getting that grant out there, and to all the small businesses out there, being one myself, I understand how you feel right now. 60%, 70%, 80%, 90%, we're all down. If anybody on this board that can feel your pain, it's me. Absolutely know exactly what you're going through. So congratulations on your grants. I hope that it helps out in the, in the big picture, and we're able to move on and still stay here in Burlington because of, overall, this town is absolutely phenomenal. There isn't one thing about this town I don't love. So congratulations on your grants, and Melissa, congratulations on doing another wonderful job. What else can I say? But thank you to everybody. Okay. Melissa, you all set? Any closing comments on you?
Thank you. I mean, just to the small business owners that are online, I will be following up, and thank you again for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Paul, where are you? You back out there yet?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We also have a lot of folks from BCAT here at the meeting tonight, so if we, if we could jump, jump to the BCAT agenda item, I'm sure we could make some additional folks be able to enjoy the rest of their evening as well.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for this, for this agenda item, Whitney Haskell worked on this on our end with Selectment Tigges. She worked with the BCAT team. So I'd like to turn this one over to Whitney to start, and then you can hear from some of our other folks from BCAT who were here in the meeting with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Whitney.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. So as Paul said, I just want to sort of give a quick overview of the process that we went through. Our, basically, our main goal in renewing this contract, the, the prior contract expired back in October, and when we started to look at third goal, our main goal was sort of to just tighten up everything and make sure that we were in compliance with all state laws. So in particular, one question that came up a few times with the prior agreement was, what is the appropriate procurement process for a contract like this? So we did some research. We looked into it, and we determined that this agreement could fall under the definition of a grant agreement within the confines of mass procurement law. So what that means is basically because BCAT is a nonprofit that has a public purpose, meaning the contract is not meant for the town government to actually procure a supplier service. It's really for a public purpose. But we didn't have to actually do a full-blown RFP process, but rather we just needed this agreement to sort of demonstrate an accountable and transparent process relationship between the town and BCAT. So just to give you a quick idea of what that means in, in practice, a few items in the contract. For example, that the requirement that BCAT submit financial and operations reports annually, which was already in the prior agreement, but we sort of fleshed that out a little bit better, a requirement that BCAT submit a multi-year capital plan of anticipated projects and deployment, things, just things like that, just to sort of clarify our relationship and the expectations of the parties. And one other thing of note, I guess, was another question that came up was we discovered that a provision in the agreement that said that upon dissolution of BCAT, that the assets would revert to the town. We realized that their articles of incorporation sort of contradicted that. So they're working to iron that out. I think those are the major items. I can certainly answer any questions that anybody has, but I would like to thank specifically Jen Dodge and Linda McNamee for all of their efforts working with Paul and I to get this sorted out and before you tonight, and also Selectment Tigges, the board's liaison to BCAT, who's also been involved along the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Whitney. Gentlemen, comments? We'll start with Mr. Tigges. You were on the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Melissa stated, I was the liaison. I'm sorry, as Whitney stated, as Whitney stated, I was the liaison, but she's the one that did all the work. She, she ironed everything out. The, she pointed out, you know, the contradiction here, and she did all the work along with the BCAT staff. So I just want to thank Whitney and the BCAT staff for getting all the creases ironed out and getting this moving forward. They, they're the ones that deserve all the credit.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whitney, it's interesting that I wrote down exactly what you were saying about the difference in the contracts, about the multi-year plan listing the anticipated capital expenditures and capital projects and the annual performance as being important. So I only have one question since you, since you beat me to the punch. It says that between three suppliers, they give approximately 5% of their receipts in town to us to give to BCAT. At one time in the past, RCN, because they were so small in their contribution in town, was doing something else besides giving 5% in a financial payment. I was wondering if that has changed, or is that the same?
Yeah, so there are, within the three providers, there are also, there's the 5%, which is pretty standard across the board with all three, and then each of the three have a different capital investment that they make, and I think that's what you're referring to with RCN. I think there's a certain amount, Comcast has a certain amount, and they have different term lengths. So some, some may have already paid their amount, some still may be paying a little bit. But yes, that has happened, and we're renegotiating some of those agreements as well. So the, the hope is to get additional capital payments going forward as well.
Okay, and we'll get updates on that when they occur?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon?
No, sir. All set.
Okay, Mr. Priest?
No questions. Whitney and everybody involved, thank you for your efforts. Obviously, we want to keep BCAT doing what you're doing. So, you know, I'm glad this all is working out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Whitney. Thank you very much for that. Jimmy, thanks for being on the Subcommittee. This is for an approval. So Mr. Sagorino, a bunch of people said you wanted to talk. This is for an approval. So Mr. Sagrino, a bunch of people said you wanted to talk about this.
No, I'm just, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, we have a bunch of folks from BCAT here with us if, if they wanted to, to speak on, on the contract as well. And I see Linda, obviously Jen's here back in the studio someplace. And I also saw some other central board members, Brad. I can't see everybody, but if anyone from BCAT would like to speak on this.
Why don't we start with Jen? Thank you. Absolutely. That's awesome. Who else is out there? I don't have a lot of these on me. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you to the chairman and thank you to all of the members of the Board of Selectmen. As Jen mentioned, I would like to thank Mr. Sagrino and Ms. Haskell for working with our subcommittee as well as our board through this process. I'm glad that we were able to work out all of the kinks and make sure that everything's good. And I am looking forward to BCAT providing the services that they have been as well as making a better presence in the Burlington community because I really do value the relationship between the town and the organization. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak on this? I see Colleen, I see Ernie, I see Brad. Anybody else would like to make a comment? Go ahead, Colleen. You're on mute, though.
Okay. Oh, I just, I did also want to say thank you to the, to the Board of Selectmen and to Whitney and Paul for all the work that went into all of this. As the clerk, I really do appreciate having our, you know, our guiding documents, you know, cleaned up and that we have a good relationship here with the town going forward. So I want to thank you all for that.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think everyone spoke. Is there anybody else that would, if I can't see you, just jump right in right now and we'll go. They're all set?
Oh, I want to talk.
Oh, there you are. You asked to speak at the end of the meeting.
Oh, 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 yeah, okay, okay.
I wrote, I wrote that down. I will get you at citizens' time. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. So now we're looking for a vote on this issue. I need a motion. Jimmy? Motion by Jim, second by?
Me, yeah.
Second by Bob. Gentlemen, roll call vote once again. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Five zero zero in favor. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, everyone involved. That was wonderful. Whitney, another great job. We have the best staff up here telling you right now. Mr. Sagrino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next, next item is just, I think the board is well aware that we did receive some great news prior to Thanksgiving about that the town was awarded a $3.5 million grant from the Mass Works program toward our MWRA project. The Mass Works program is a very, very competitive, very, very competitive grant program. And so we're very fortunate. I believe we got the second largest grant that was awarded out of all of them. I think there was over a hundred applications and they made twenty-something awards throughout the state. And really proud of the team. And what's unique about this particular award is it really highlights the great relationship we have with our business community. This idea of using Mass Works towards MWRA arose through the Burlington area Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee. Specifically on that, we meet regularly with Rick Parker, Bob Buckley, Kelly Pappas. Rick and Kelly are both town meeting members as well as residents in the community. And what we're able to do was work with a bunch of businesses within the chamber. And we agreed to work together to fund a consultant to assist us with this application. And, you know, that type of partnership, you know, businesses willingly bringing forth money to help us get to a water, water source quicker, it's just huge. And I think sometimes it's easy to take for granted how much the business community does here in town. I certainly wanted to make sure that I have an opportunity to thank everybody for this. So if you'll just behoove me for a quick second, I'd like to thank the chamber, Rick Parker, Kelly Pappas, Bob Buckley and his role at the chamber, and some of the businesses that supported our grant application. With Leahy, of course, Nordbaum Corporation, Gutierrez Company, Oracle, Wegmans, the Boston Marriott in Burlington, the Burlington Marriott, National Development, Ingenuity Properties, Reamer and Bronstein, as well as our team on this worked very hard on it. As you might imagine, Mr. Sanchez, as well as Melissa. We had some assistance from Kristin Kazner at the planning department as well. So it really was a team effort. It was really great news and it was a great feeling that the state recognized everything that we do here in Burlington to try to promote business. But we're also becoming known as a community that's very progressive in supporting housing opportunities as well. So a big part of our, our grant application was the housing units that are going to be built down on Third Ave as well as the many life sciences potential projects that we have going on. And again, it was, it was great news to us. It was a great feeling that people at the state really recognized all the great things that were going on here in Burlington. And they also really recognized our partnership with our businesses, a direct partnership with our businesses to help get this grant. We also had a partnership involved with the town of Lexington and the town of Bedford also supported this as sort of a regional initiative. So 3.5 million, which will reduce what we're gonna have to pay to build the water pipe to the MWRA. So it's all, it's all good news. And, you know, we're hopeful that we can go back next year for another, another swipe of the apple. So that's all. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody and just sort of let the board know all the partners that we had in this initiative and really proud of what was done with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Paul. So how do we say thanks? I don't know where to go on that one. That's such great news. That's fantastic for us. So thank that whole team, everybody that you mentioned in there. Gentlemen, Mr. Runyon would like to speak on it?
Actually, you know, great work. Obviously, Paul's been, you know, keeping us apprised of this a little bit ahead of the, the press release. But I, I just want to say I did share the press release on social media and not surprisingly, got quite a few, quite a few likes. But nice work, everybody. Especially, you know, I think that's so great that we're able to work with the business community. And yeah, the folks up on Beacon Hill, they know there's good things going on here in Burlington. It's really evident. So thanks again, Paul.
Thank you. Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, again, thanks to all the staff here in Burlington and all the businesses in town. It's, it's amazing how when we all come together, we're, we're able to accomplish some really good things and something positive in this, in this negative mindset around, you know, around us every day. But Paul, just thank you for your consistency and, and guiding us along. So I just thank you and it, it feels good to, it's nice to get some good news.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, obviously, Paul, you know, a huge thank you to you and the team. And, you know, a massive thank you to the business community, the folks at the chamber, you know, who, who worked, you know, with us to, to make this happen. You know, it, this theme, you know, keeps coming up at our meetings, you know, time and again. You know, we've, we've got good people here in Burlington. We've got smart people here in Burlington. And we do. And we're very lucky, you know, not just, you know, in, in Town Hall, but, you know, just across the board. We have, you know, good intentioned people with smart people as residents, as business owners, as employees, as staff, as friends, family. Everyone, you know, really has that in mind. And when, when we act in a collaborative nature and when we act as a community, you know, I mean, it, it showed, I mean, $3.5 million is not a poverty sum of money. You know, that's a, that's a big deal. And we should all be very, very proud to say that we live, work, and love Burlington. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to send out kudos to Ken Gordon, our state representative, who's the House Vice Chair on Economic Development at the state, and our state Senator, Cindy Friedman, for their, for their assistance in this also. You know, it's, it's, it's nice to be able to see how this stuff works from the inside, to sit here and watch the relationships that we have, not only with our own employees, with all the elected and appointed officials and volunteers and the business community, to see how things come together, not easily sometimes, but how they all come together for one good cause, and that is Burlington. So all thank you to you and everybody. And congratulations to everyone who had a hand in this to help us to make that payment on our, our major bill coming for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, anything else you want to add to that? Because there's a lot of thank yous going around right now and a lot of kudos and everything else. So you guys did a great job on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, we just wanted to update the board publicly and also just to publicly thank all the businesses and entities that assisted with the, with the project.
We knew we hired you and Melissa for a reason. Guys are good. All right, let's go to the next item. Mr. Sagrino?
Mr. Chairman, I think the, the next item is the People Helping People. So do you want to turn it over to Selectman Hogan?
Absolutely, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you very much. We have a couple of people to talk about People Helping People. We all know how important People Helping People is to the town and how valuable their work has done. Judy Walsh, who's the, on the Board of Directors at People Helping People. And as I mentioned, Laurie Becker is with Rotary. But they just did an event this past weekend, last weekend, helping people distribute meals for Thanksgiving. So Judy, if you'll hold on just a moment, I'm gonna ask Laurie to take two minutes, three minutes to talk about what Rotary did on that food distribution for People Helping People.
Sure. Thanks, Bob. Judy, nice to meet you, finally. I know, right? But yeah, we're actually doing, the Burlington, Rotary is actually doing quite a bit with People Helping People. We, this weekend was their annual help with turkey and Thanksgiving dinners. The counts that I have are 198 turkeys and 48, I think, smaller, like turkey breasts that were picked up at Wegmans from the Boston Food Bank and then taken to St. Mark's, which is a different situation this year with the drive-through. We were actually a little more hands-on in the past. But I'm really happy to help out with the organization. And all in all, we had about 12 rotarians between those that were picking up and dropping off and those that helped during the, during the day. And we're also actually, we have a couple of other things we're doing. We're actually, you're gonna mention the wish tree, I hope. So we have, our club is taking on about 35 wishes from the tree. And we're also gonna be working at the mall on Wednesday for the day to help out and give people an idea of what to do and try to encourage some more people to help with the wishes for this season. And we're also involved with the backpacks as well. So we do a lot with People Helping People and we're happy to do it. And it's been, it's a new entity for me because I've only been in town and in Rotary for three years. But we do a lot together and we're happy to do it. And we have great relationships. And it's always sort of somebody new and we're kind of, Judy and I have talked, emailed with a bunch of other people as well. So, so happy to help. And on behalf of the Rotary, I hope it's a great season for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Laurie. Judy, hello. And now it's your turn. Tell us what's going on and what you need, sir.
Oh, well, it's been an unusual year, to say the least. So Jane, actually, our Jane McAnich, our pantry coordinator, was invited to speak. And she's at school tonight, or she has a class tonight. So I was the person chosen. So she's prepared lots of notes for me. So first of all, Thanksgiving was a bit of a challenge because we usually use the hall at the Congregational Church across from Simon's Park. But we couldn't have people come into the church. So we had to do a drive-up process. So what we did was we set everything up the day before according to family size. And then on Sunday, Rotary did go, Wegmans stores all our turkeys, which we get at no cost from the Greater Boston Food Bank. This year, we also got squash, onions, potatoes, carrots, all from the Greater Boston Food Bank without any cost. The only cost we had to pay for this year was for string beans, which was a big savings for us, especially when we had 191 families sign up for Thanksgiving dinner, which we did pass out only 177 meals. Last year, we did 140. So the increase was about 25% more Thanksgiving dinners given out. And the Boy Scouts, I don't know if you've ever been to Shaw's on the Saturday before we do that, they asked for pie donations. We had 225 pies donated so that a family of eight didn't just get one pie, they were able to get two. We also started just a new project this week for English language learners. There's many families in town that don't speak English. And so we've connected with a teacher at Memorial School and one at the high school. And through them, they gave us names of people that could use a Thanksgiving meal. So we gave out 40 other meals of complete Thanksgiving dinners. In all, we gave out, oh, I believe we gave out over 12,000 pounds of food just for Thanksgiving. So we, it was a big project, but it went very smoothly. People drove up, we had their names. Everything went into their trunks, all according to COVID protocol. We have our, this program that's just started at the mall the day after Thanksgiving. This has been a really big challenge this year because a lot of the companies that support us by adopting families and so forth, they're not in their buildings. So some of them have continued to support us by doing signup geniuses or some form of signup. And they have still adopted families and so forth. But we have had, I've gotten all four elementary schools involved. They've all adopted families. The Girl Scouts and Brownies are collecting generic toys, which is usually done by Oracle. And right now, we have 89 families and 202 children signed up to get Christmas gifts, which means we will, and each child gets a minimum of 10 gifts. So we'll be sorting well over 2,000 gifts. We have a signup genius also on our People Helping People Facebook page. We put up 150 items and over 90 have been taken already. So that's been, and social media has helped us. We are company, able to help us this year. So and also during this time, we give all of our seniors $40 gift cards to do with what they would like. We give them to Target so they can get clothing, they can buy food. And then we also give our families gift cards to Market Basket to purchase a Christmas meal of their choosing. We give them all the vegetables and the basics. And then we give them a gift card to buy, whether they want a turkey, a ham, or whatever they would like. So donations have been phenomenal. The Burlington community has supported us. I just can't tell you how much the support has been out there. And it hasn't just been Burlington. I don't know if you've noticed our banner that we put up on the common. It just, we thank everyone. We've had help from Winchester, Bedford, Bill Ricka, all kinds of people donating to us. There was a company in Bed Um, there was a company in Bedford that didn't have their, um, summer get-together. They donated all the money from that, they would have spent on that get-together to us because one of their workers nominated us as a, um, non-profit to be donated to. So people have really stepped up and helped us a lot. So how are we doing overall? Uh, we're up about twenty-two percent in the number of families that we're helping monthly. Uh, people can come once a week. Some people come once every other week. Uh, some people come every week. Some people once a month. The amount of food that we're distributing is up over a hundred percent from last year. And that's because the Greater Boston Food Bank has had a lot of grant money given to them. And so we're allowed to order more food at minimal cost. But our biggest problem right now is that we've outgrown our space. We have twelve hundred, one thousand two hundred square feet of space. We've been using St. Mark's Church Hall as a backup for us because, um, they're not using it. But when church starts up again, they will need to use it. So we're looking for a building that has about four thousand square feet of space. Problem is we do not pay any rent to St. Mark's for the use of the building. So we would like to find a built, maybe some company that would like to donate a space. There's lots of vacant spaces here in town. But we would pay as well. But that would be, we would have to do a really major fundraising campaign for that. But we do need a lot more space.
Uh, Judy, if I might jump in for a second, having some time with the board members, uh, before my recent illness, uh, I was always amazed at the volunteers who participate in the food pantry and other things. Uh, people who go into the, uh, Greater Boston Food Bank to pick up, uh, food and, uh, to, to see the kind of numbers we're seeing now. I mean, we're Burlington. Most of us like to think that we don't have the problems that we see on the news. But a hundred and seventy-seven meals, uh, two thousand gifts, uh, these, these are pretty big numbers for a community that supposedly doesn't, as we all do. Sorry, Judy.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Uh, she also, Jane also wanted me to remind you guys that, you know, once school was closed down in March, we took over and provided, uh, the lunch program to all, uh, students who were on free or reduced lunch because the school department was not capable of doing that. We usually run a lunch program during February and April vacation and all summer. But we started the week school closed and we provided breakfast and lunch for people right through the end of August. Right now, we're still providing snack bags because a lot of the parents say, even though they're getting free lunches at school, that there's some days they're not in school. So we've been providing some extra things for the students that are home. And they're just finding it a little more challenging. Uh, we just received a state grant, however, of a hundred and six thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars, which just, we were just floored when we were able to get this grant because, uh, it's going to help us, um, ensure guidance compliance and further improve the distribution of food to those in need. Uh, we're going to update our infrastructure with the purchase of a freezer, an outdoor refrigeration unit, a refrigerated vehicle, kitchen infrastructure and a generator. If, we have five freezes and five refrigerators in the pantry. If we ever lose power, that's a disaster for us. So a generator is very important to be able to get.
Judy, let the chairman ask the other members if they have specific questions for you.
Okay, I have a couple more things you want me to tell you. I'll try to be really quick. The truck that, we were hoping to get a truck and we're going to roll out a pop-up pantry to go to like the senior housing and so forth. Um, we know it's, we don't meet the need of everyone in town. We feel we only handle about six, sixty percent based on kids that get free and reduced lunch. Um, that there's more families out there. I, I don't know if they feel embarrassed to come to the pantry, but we're here. Our motto is to help Burlington residents in, in time of need and that's what we're here for. Uh, about twenty-five of our clients lack transportation. So, and many are mobile, mobily challenged and, and they talked about the new program to the English language learners. We also have one quick thing about the garden. This year, there was a lot of theft at our garden. I think we only had about a thousand pounds of food where last year we got over twenty-five hundred pounds of food. So we would like, hopefully we'll have more surveillance next year to help protect the garden from theft. And we're also looking to expand the garden to put in some fruit trees and, um, just to put up a better buffer between the neighbors. So those are some of the things, um, that Jane wanted me to share with you tonight. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to have them, the members talk? Absolutely. We'll start with Mr. Priest.
Do I speak to his wife frequently?
Okay, you're all set, Nick.
Uh, yeah, I was, I was going to say, I, uh, I, the, the questions I could probably ask and the conversation that we could have could probably spare a much longer period of time than, uh, anyone he would probably want to give me at this moment. You know, thank you and, and, and the organization for everything that you do for the residents of this town. You know, and, uh, anything else that I can, I, I can do to help, please, you know, uh, let me know. I, I wish I could be doing more and I, I want to be doing more and, you know, I, the, the theme of tonight seems to be collaboration and community. So, um, you know, whatever, whatever I can do, please.
Burlington community has stepped up for us, definitely.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Runyon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey Judy, good to see you again. Uh, I just want to say, I just want to say that, uh, we're, we're ready to go, uh, uh, next Wednesday on the ninth, uh, at the, uh, at the Wish Tree at the mall. And we, we, uh, we love doing it. We look forward to it every year. So probably see you next Wednesday.
I probably, it's, it's a little bit different this year, uh, because we try to have as little contact between the person who would pick a gift. So there's some new rules. Hopefully you read all the stuff.
Oh, trust me, I did. I read them all.
Okay. But I do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Judy, thank you to, and to Laurie at the Rotary and everybody who else helps make, makes this a, a success. As Nick stated, it is community, it's collaboration. But when you take a look at what would happen if you didn't exist? All those kids, all those families. Look how many people would have, I mean, it's been a rough year already. Look at how many families would not have had a Thanksgiving dinner. Look how many kids would not have lunch or, or snacks or whatever. So it, it's sometimes you don't realize how much good you do until you take all that away and realize how much people are hurting. But thank you, thank you to the pantry. Thank you, every, everybody helps make it a success. All set, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much. Um, Judy, Bob, Laurie and everyone involved in this, uh, it, it's fantastic that this community does it. I think Nick hit it right. This is one of those nights where I'm thanking everybody for everything they do. And, uh, you, you, you people are incredible to feed that many families and that many kids. So, um, all the best and thank you very, very much. And like Nick said, if there's something we can do up here or we can do personally, just don't hesitate to reach out to us at all. We're here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for having us.
Yep.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Laurie.
Okay, Mr. Sagrino, um, we, next we have the approval of the minutes, right? Is there anything, uh, can we go to citizens' time right after that? There's one girl that wants to talk.
Why don't we do that first, Mr. Chairman?
Well, that's why I was asking if, Mr. Sagrino, if we can skip the agenda item and then go right to citizens' time. I didn't know how that would work. So that's why I was asking.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, absolutely. Uh, citizens' time technically is a agenda item as well. So you just want to ta-take them out of order.
All right. So let's approve the minutes and then we'll go right to citizens' time. Okay? Betty, is everything all set for this, with the minutes on this?
Yes, Joe.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes from October twenty-sixth or November second? Is everything, um, good for everybody? Everyone shaking their head yes? Okay, so if I can get an emotion on that, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for October twenty-sixth and November second.
Thank you. And the second would be?
Second.
We'll go right in order again. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Uh, Priest, there are my list here.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Randy, yes. So everyone's approved on that. Okay, Betty? Thank you, Betty.
Thank you.
We'll go right to citizens' time. I don't know who wants to speak. Uh, I know you're out there someplace, but this is the time to quan him. Is that how you say it?
Uh, yes. Hi, uh, thank you. Thank you, Chairman, for giving me this opportunity to, to, to share my, um, my problem, concern. Oh, I'm a tenant here in town. So first of all, I think, think, want to thank, uh, Judy for the update for the people, for, uh, people help. Uh, I have been the volunteer in the community, in the garden, the, the food pantry garden since June. So from June, July, uh, August to September, uh, to the end of October, I have been, uh, spending a lot of time working there with Peter. So I, it, it is my, uh, pleasure helping people to de-deliver the vegetables, uh, growth vegetables there. So I enjoy uh, being a citizen in the town. But recently I, I, I have some, um, difficulty here. I want to, uh, I, I was seeking help, but I, I'm very disappointed by what happened was, uh, I'm a tenant here, renting one room. The, the, the bedroom, uh, roof is leaking. I, uh, reported to the landlord, uh, haven't fixed so far. So I, uh, asked the Board of, Board of Health to, uh, uh, came for inspection. They, uh, last Monday, it was a raining day last Monday, my bedroom, uh, roof leaking. I, uh, contacted Board of Health. They told me, uh, you just leave your phone number. Someone will, uh, reach, you will get back to you. I waited until the end of Monday. No one got back to me. So I called them back. Susan told me she can come on Tuesday to the, do the inspection. So Tuesday morning, Susan came, came for the inspection. She, uh, uh, no, she took a P, uh, the temperature for the room. The, my room temperature was only fifty-five, uh, degrees at that time when she took the picture. She told me that, uh, that is a violation because according to the, to the, uh, to the, uh, zone, uh, to some, uh, Board of Health regulation should be sixty-eight during the daytime, sixty-four during, uh, nighttime. My, my bedroom only, uh, fifty-eight, uh, degrees during the daytime and, uh, in the evening is even lower. And then, uh, Susan told me she's going to write a violation letter. But, uh, after that, the next day I contacted her. She said that, uh, uh, she don't need to write a letter because she already, uh, 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 spoke with the landlord. So that was on Wednesday after the day she, uh, is inspected the house. Wednesday night I went back, uh, the temp, the heat was still not restored. Uh, that was already after the office hour. So I had to go to, uh, reach out to my neighbor. Uh, my neighbor came, uh, came to see, confirm that the heat was not restored. The, the, the thermostat is locked in the lockbox. I was not able to adjust that. So that is the, 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 the problem. Then the leaking roof, when Susan came here on last Tuesday, she said that the roof is no longer leaking, but of course Tuesday the rain stopped. It's, it's not raining. My roof was leaking during the rain. So, so Susan told me she can only, uh, uh, document the temperature violation, but not the leaking roof. Then she said that, uh, i-if the, uh, roof leaks again, call, call them again. They are going to, uh, do the inspection, uh, when the leak, when the roof leaking happens. Today, early today, my roof leaks badly. I reached out, tried to reach out to them, um, a couple of times. They ignored me. Then, then, uh, around three thirty PM, the, the, the rain was leaking, uh, badly from the roof. I called the Board of Health, uh, I said that if, if Susan won't, uh, because I was instructed by Susan to call when, when it, uh, leaks again, now I call you. And, and Susan said that if it leaks again, call Board of Health. They are going to, uh, go there, uh, uh, at that time to inspect, but no one came. Then, uh, then Susan, then they said that someone will get back to you. I was waiting in the, in the, under the leaking roof. Then Susan came here at five PM, after five PM.
I, I, I don't know if I'm pronouncing your, your name right at first. So we, we're trying to understand, you've got quite a few problems going on with where you live. Mr. Sagrino, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, may I suggest that, um, she reach out to our office tomorrow to Betty and I? Give us a phone call, uh, with the address and everything and, and, and we'll, we'll look into it. We'll look into what's going on over there. We'd be happy to do so. Uh, we can get in touch with the building department and have a better understanding of what, uh, her options may be in terms of, uh, dealing with her landlord.
No, 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 not the building department. It's the Board of Health. The, the issue.
Juan, before you, before we get, this is, this is an ongoing issue with, uh, the Board of Health, the Selectmen. We can't use any names. We can't say where you live. We can't say anything like that. It's against the rules and regulations. So what Mr. Sagrino was offering with you right now, he's offering you an opportunity to call his office tomorrow during the work hours. And during work hours, they're going to work with you to try and resolve this problem. We can't do anything about it as a board right now. It's not on our agenda. This is citizens' time. This is only for people making comments to us right now.
Oh, thank you.
The best thing for you to do is to listen to Mr. Sagrino and call his office tomorrow. And then he will work with you to try to resolve, uh, the rain issue, the heat issue. It sounds like you have a lot. It doesn't sound like the landlord's being very reasonable to you at all in my, in my estimation. So.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So that's what we're going to do.
Please call our office and, and speak to, uh, myself or Betty and we'll, we'll try to figure out what's going on with this.
Oh, wait, I know the phone number. I don't have the phone number.
Two seven two sixteen hundred.
Two seven two six hundred.
No, no.
Two seven zero.
Two seven zero, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nope.
Sorry.
It's two, two seven zero one six zero zero. Did you get that?
Oh, yes. Two seven zero one six zero zero. Sure. I'll call during office hour tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. And sorry for what you're going through right now.
Thank you. Thanks.
And you can call Mr. Priest anytime. All right, gentlemen, uh, we're going to go to subsidiary reports. We will start with, uh, Mr. Priest.
I thought I'm getting picked on first for a reason, see? Actually, I, I have nothing, uh, new to report other than the fact that, um, ISAC will be meeting on December seventh, their first meeting. Um, that's all. Thank you.
Excuse me? You done?
Don't disrupt the flow, Joe.
Okay, Jimmy, what do you have for us?
Uh, again, not too much. Um,
Goodbye.
Okay, just, no, just a quick word, word of warning. Uh, still all leaves on the ground and, uh, it's raining out pretty heavily. So just keep an eye on the, uh, catch basins and make sure the, it doesn't flood. That's all. And I'm done.
Absolutely. Mr. Hogan?
Uh, no, I have nothing else besides what was discussed during the course of the meeting with the People Helping People and the Police Department. I do have a question, though. Does anybody know how everybody made out of the extended stay, uh, facility after they had the water damage and the fire?
Didn't we just talk to her?
No, this, this was the extended stay.
Oh, I didn't know that happened. I'm sorry. I, I missed that.
Selectman Hogan, I, I believe, uh, the, the residents have been relocated to other extended stays and the building department's currently working with them. A significant amount of damage are from water damage and I don't believe that they've been given the okay to open yet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But everybody's been relocated to other facilities.
Thank you.
Mr. Runyon?
No, sir. We're all set tonight. Thank you.
Wow, everyone's all set. I'm almost afraid to say anything at all right now. Um, I am going to say one thing very quick. I don't have anything on a sub report. I don't have anything on a secondary reports. I do have some things I can wait until next meeting. But tonight's meeting was very, very interesting, gentlemen. A lot of thank yous to a lot of town employees and a lot of special people that helped out. I mean, it started right out from the very beginning with the, with walking the flag to Boston. And it ended, it ended on another great note with People Helping People. There was a lot, a lot of thank you and I'll say love in the room tonight. So I appreciate that, guys. And I am finished. Mr. Sagorino, your turn.
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman, other than I don't know if anybody heard it, but the virtual tree lighting took place right as our meeting was kicking off. So there was a lot of noise outside of Betty and I's windows. And common looks great from my window here. I'm looking forward to seeing it on my way home, so.
That's great. Thank you. So we did citizens' time, everything else is all set. Gentlemen, I need a motion to leave.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Jimmy. Okay, I can't go all in favor. So Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Marandy, yes. My gavel. Good night, gentlemen. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.